Is now in order. I'm calling the meeting at 5:01 and we will begin with a roll call. Counselor Powers. Counselor Demerit.
Here.
Counselor Baker-elect. Counselor Laraway. Counselor Berthasell.
Present.
And Counselor Marks, who will be joining us by Zoom.
Present.
Awesome. So the first order of business for tonight's meeting is to get those who won the election last Tuesday sworn in so they may begin official duties. I am happy to report that Mark Brewer has already been by my office and has already taken his oath, so he is not in attendance. Let's start off with Brian McGill. And this would be for RSU 26. And I gotta grab the right one. So Brian, please raise your right hand. Do you, Brian McGill, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue to be a citizen thereof? Do you also swear you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as an RSU number 26 school board member according to the Constitution, the laws of this state, and the provisions of the Town of Orno Charter and Ordinances? Awesome. Get on over here and sign. So there you go. I will report that out to the superintendent's office in the morning. And so now I'd like to call in front of the seal, Matthew Powers, Robert Laraway, and Jacob Baker. And we are going to do a collective oath, all at the same time, if that is your pleasure. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Robert Laraway, Jacob Baker, and Matthew Powers swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Maine so long as you shall continue to be citizens thereof? Do each of you also swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as town councilors according to the Constitution, the laws of this state, and the provisions of the Orno Town Charter and Ordinances? Awesome. Come on over and sign. And congratulations again. Okay, so. Matt, I'm gonna let you grab yours. There you go. We'll have to make that part of the dress code. So as soon as everyone has signed, they are welcome to join their seat at the dais. And then I am also going to take the dais so we can begin swearing in a council chair once one has been nominated and elected. Alrighty, so item number three on our agenda is the call for nominations and vote of a council chair. I will be administering this. And how it is going to work is I am going to take nominations from the floor. Should nominations be one person, then that's easy. If it's multiple people being nominated, I will go up and down the line with who's been nominated to confirm their intent to serve. And then we will do a vote. Good evening, Leo. You are just here in time. And I am going to put into the record that Leo has joined our meeting. Alrighty, so um. We are at the point that we're gonna call for nominations. And so I would open up the floor. If someone would like to make a nomination for council chair, I will hear it.
I would like to nominate Dan Demerit as council chair.
Okay. So I have Dan Demerit on the floor. Is there anyone else who would like to put forward a nomination? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to cease nominations. So at this time, I'm gonna call for all those in favor to elect Dan Demerit as your council chair to please say aye or raise your hand. All those in favor of Dan Demerit as chair.
Aye.
Okay, and that looks to be unanimous. And Sarah, you are doing that as well. Awesome.
Aye.
I am going to be turning the meeting over to Mr. Demerit. You are welcome to come take your seat. I will pass you the gavel. And before I do that, I would like to inform all of those in attendance that Counselor Marks is by Zoom, which means that we will be taking a roll call for each of our orders this evening. And where this is your first time at bat, I'm gonna help you a little bit, so. Congratulations. And our next order of business chair is number four, which is your call for nominations of your vice council chair. And I'll let you get your breath and you can run off.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Shelley. So we will call for first nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Sarah Marks.
Thank you. Are there any additional nominations for the position of vice chair? That we will. Seeing none, we will close the nominations for vice chair and ask for a roll call vote.
Yes, and I will go down through the names. Counselor Powers.
Approved.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell.
In favor.
Counselor Baker.
Approved.
Counselor Laraway.
In favor.
And Counselor Marks.
In favor.
Alright. So that carries. Yes, you do get to vote. Sorry.
In favor.
As you can see, we're a little rusty until everyone gets going. Okay, so.
Uh, the next item on the agenda for the town council meeting is the agenda review. Does anyone have any items that they'd like to bring up as part of the agenda review for today? Sarah? Okay, we'll move on and to the approval of minutes for February 12th. You wanna do them as a pack?
Sure.
Sure. Uh, we'll call for the approval of minutes for February 12th, 2024, and February 21st, 2024.
Move approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? You wanna do?
Dan.
We have to roll call.
We do.
Dan. Dan. Sorry.
Counselor Marks?
I just had a question. Maybe I didn't raise my hand in time. Sorry.
Um. That's okay.
On the, are there page numbers to the minutes for the February 12th meeting? I'm scrolling. One, two, three, four. I believe it's the fifth page. In the summary of our discussions around costs for order 2428. I believe it's on the fifth page. I don't know if Shelley has it there. Just. In the summary of my comments after Jeff Wingard's comments, I would like to amend that if possible. It says, adding that the square footage projections were calculated according to the RSU number 26 Board Chair. Do you see it, Shelley?
Sarah, I know what you're referencing.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just not, I'm not sure what after contractors had released preliminary information means in that context. And what was important to me when I re-listened to my comments was that in response to Jeff, I was responding to Jeff and saying that the renovation figures were not given for light-touch renovation at RSU 26. They were given for renovation that included bathrooms and partial kitchens and total renovation of the superintendent's space. So for me, that's what was important is to indicate that those RSU 26 figures were not from light-touch renovations. They were from the part of the renovation that was significant renovations. Thank you.
So are there any other additions or changes to the minutes? Okay, we'll call for a vote on the, the clerk will call for a vote on the approval of the minutes.
Counselor Powers. So I have made the notation in my notes. I'm going to go back and look at the tape to get it exact how Sarah made the reference. If that was what you intended, correct, Sarah?
Yeah, I just would like it to indicate that my response was that the RSU 26 renovations that were used in those calculations were not from light renovations but from the part of the renovation that was significant with bathrooms and kitchens included. Thank you.
Yes, okay. So probably should have clarified that. Sorry.
In favor.
Counselor Lar, um, Counselor Kenny.
Approved as amended.
Counselor Baker.
I should abstain since I wasn't at said meeting.
Okay. Counselor Berthasell.
In favor.
Counselor Laraway.
In favor.
And Counselor Marks.
In favor as amended. Thank you.
Yes. And Counselor Demerit.
In favor as amended. Thank you. Okay, this is the part of the meeting where we take public comments for those wishing to speak on, or asked to come to, on items that are not a part of our agenda. People who wish to speak are asked to come to the microphone, state their name and affiliation, or their address in town, and address the town chair. Comments should not be repetitive, and the council chair reserves the right to limit speaker time. Pete, you're able to let us know if anyone raises their hand online. Is that correct?
That's correct. I will.
Okay. And with that.
Jeff Gordon, 22 Hamlin and Orno. I'm commenting on the fact that we've seemed to become a community with a landscape of trash cans. A lot of places are not bringing in their cans. They're on the curb. They're in the street. There's one rental property in my neighborhood where the cans have never been brought in. And there are, I think, four cans lying on the ground with trash spilling out of them because the truck can't pick them up. We do have a provision in the ordinances that I believe it reads something along the lines of the trash receptacles are supposed to be out of sight from the curb. We either need to change that or start enforcing it. Um, I think properties that are managed by rental agencies that have registered rental managers assigned to the properties should be required to go around and look at these properties from time to time to see what kind of condition they're in. I don't believe that's happening. And I think we would all be better off if it did. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there any other public comment? Okay. With that, we will close the public comment session, section of this meeting and move on to public hearings. Public hearings are formal opportunities for the community to provide feedback on specific items that will be considered by the town council. The council chair will open each hearing, recognize staff to provide an overview or presentation on the hearing topic, and then ask for questions or comments from the public. Those who wish to speak are asked to come to the microphone in person or raise their hand on a Zoom, state their name and affiliation, and then briefly address the town chair. So that will open the public hearing on, a public hearing A, and act to consider an amendment of the Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, Personnel, Article 6, Working Environment, Section 2891, adding Section D, Potential Liability Claims of Harassment or Discrimination. We'd welcome public comment on this proposed ordinance.
Paul Smith, taxpayer, Orno. I'm speaking in opposition to this proposed ordinance being heard tonight. At first glance, this is an ordinance that, or ordinance revision, that appeals to open government, and it also appeals to controlling expenditures of public funds for unwise or nefarious purposes. There are, however, sound reasons that municipal personnel management cases are not subject to public scrutiny and approval. In particular, on this ordinance, a required town council vote on settlement of claims of discrimination and harassment would negatively politicize the process. And I can give you three immediate considerations on that. First of all, it places a political thumb on the scale during good-faith investigations and negotiations of claims of discrimination or harassment. That kind of political intrusion would be unfair to all the participants in the vast majority of this kind of case that are resolved to the mutual satisfaction of employee and employer. Second, the promise of publicity on such cases presents an opportunity for outside parties seeking political gain to incite or exploit claims of discrimination and harassment. Third, it violates the confidentiality of settlement agreements. And that discourages legitimate claims of such harassment or discrimination. This kind of a required violation of confidentiality places an unfair burden on any employee who may prevail and who may be concerned over public stigmatization or future employment prospects. So this is flawed legislation, and I urge you to oppose it.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone like, else like to be heard on this proposed ordinance? Claire?
Uh, I'm Claire Ackroyd, also a taxpaying resident and very much less well-informed on these matters than Paul. I had several thoughts about this. I, a question to start with, am I right? I, I'm afraid that I'm sufficiently badly informed that my comments make no sense. Is it true that the town manager reports to the council? Is that a straight line? Okay, that makes a little bit more sense to me. So. My first thought on reading this is that this, like Paul said, is a very good idea. That the, I was sort of horrified to realize how uninformed the council was on recent matters. And I, I sort of thought, that came as a surprise to me that this was not known more widely and that we, the public, had no way to know what was going on behind closed doors. And I thought that this would be an absolutely obvious thing, that the council, in executive session, which may or may not get around the problem of over-politicizing and over-advertising what's going on, but that the town council seriously ought to be informed of matters as grave as these that we're talking about. And so I think I am seriously in favor of that. The last piece I think I disagree with, that the idea that the town council could veto, which is what I think you would be being given here. You would be able to veto a decision that had been made by an expensive lawyer who presumably you trust because you're paying the person. And that, you know, having arrived at a negotiated settlement between insurance companies, complainant, the lawyers, that the council could then come in and veto that decision seems to me like the, the, uh, too late at that point. But that the idea that the council, by knowing, by being better informed, would be able possibly to intervene or mediate or recommend mediation and prevent a situation from becoming one that was so costly in terms of personal suffering, expense, time, energy, reputations. That, to me, would be a good thing if well-intentioned councilors could bring some different viewpoint to bear on the sticky situation. And I completely agree about the violation of, if, if, if this would result in the politicization, that's what struck me that the, I'm sorry, I'm babbling. The, the, the idea of the possibility of a veto would, it seemed to me, make it very difficult for lawyers to come to a clean decision and not be afraid that they were going to have their decision overruled by a highly political body. You might have a bunch of crazy right-wingers. You might have a bunch of crazy left-wingers who had an agenda that was in opposition, you know, to a well-thought-out and legally sound decision that had been reached. And that struck me, strikes me as a bad idea. I think if you can extract any sense out of that, I think, I think I've come to the end of my notes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard on this issue? Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Avinash Rade. I'm a taxpayer and resident of Orno. I support this amendment to the ordinance. I think it'll really give much-needed transparency in terms of what happens behind closed doors. A lot happens. That's why we see two discrimination cases settled in the way the town does business. And that's just in the last 10 years, you know? There's a lot of people who don't think systemic racism exists. Not in Maine. One of the whitest state in the nation, not here. But systemic racism does exist. And the payouts that the town has given with my taxpayer money bears on the responsibility on elected officials like you to stop and amend and dismantle the way racism exists and operates. I just wanted to say that abuse, this is found that abuse happens behind closed doors. When people are watched, there's much less chance of people abusing the power they have over somebody else. Now, the town is a hierarchical organization, the way the system operates. The town manager has the most power in the organization. Not only, and this is a myth, that you councilors have authority over town manager. Yes, you do in, on paper, but when it comes to operation, you are subordinate to town manager because A, the town manager, you have really very little transparency in what goes behind, goes on in the, on the personal level. Like, having worked for the town for seven years and also, you know, settled a discrimination case, I can attest to this. Abuse happens behind closed doors. It's in the executive sessions that and in personal meetings that bullying happens, that ganging up happens. You know, you can read a lot of literature on this. But this is also a problem of white supremacy. This is, no matter how much you deny it, we live in a white supremacist culture. I, as a person of color, have seen in just in the last few months in this very council, only one councilor is new. Congratulations to have your seat. But a person of color was silenced when it made you uncomfortable. I'm talking about Ravikant Patil, who was here at the podium. And you used gymnastics and legalese to essentially silence him and take his right of free expression. And you, and it's so hypocritical of this council to silence a person of color and then put it on the website that, oh, I wanna hear, I wanna make people of color feel welcome. You know, and, and at the same meeting, you, you let, oh, the, the reason for silencing Ravikant Patil a few, two months ago was we don't, we are not taking comments on performance, but in the same way, you're allowing comments of positive performance. You know, so this hypocrisy needs to stop. And I'm sorry that I might be making you uncomfortable, but it is my responsibility as a resident of Orno, as and as a person of color, to essentially speak truth to power. I also wanna say that you are subordinate to the town manager because A, your terms vary every, like, it's a revolving door, the council itself. You are, the maximum experience here on the council operating as a council member is, what, three, four years? But the last town manager was 12 years. They can run circles around you. And another way you are subordinate to the town manager is pay. You don't make anything. You are voluntary workers. You are paid cents to an hour. The town manager makes six-figure salaries and has a wealth of experience and time to put towards running circles around you. So I, I am in favor of paying councilors. That is also a white supremacy mark because it keeps people like me, who are poor, out of running for council. Why would I have two jobs and take the role of a council member when I'm not getting paid anything? This is white supremacy at play. And you, when I came here from India, my grandmother said, no matter what you do, don't make, feel, make white people uncomfortable. Because anytime we do speak up, you know, we get a beating. Sometimes we lose our lives. Not here. Racism doesn't exist in the whitest state in the nation. It's, this is just, I know, I know people have said like, it doesn't happen here in Orno. But right here, in this very organization, you have paid out discrimination for racism, discrimination for disability. And it, it is continuing, it will continue to happen. On the point of bringing it, our confidentiality, there is no confidentiality. This is a public organization. My name and my, the whole agreement was somehow published in the Bengal Daily. Look it up. I still found a job, but it's a moot point because see how it plays out, how the system operates. And also, okay, you paid out two discrimination settlements. You also paid incentivized bad behavior by paying $95,000 to the town manager who left. How is that not incentivizing bad behavior? So please, I, I'm not here only to criticize, but also to suggest that real systemic change needs to happen. If somebody is found to be discriminating at a high-power position, please put into contract that you will not get a payoff. And I will, we will not incentivize paying money off. Anyway, I might be out of time, but I'm here to say, I am here. I'm a person of color. I'm here and I'm here to stay. And I will speak truth to power. And you might keep silencing me like you did Ravikant Patil that day. It might make you feel uncomfortable, but I am here to keep speaking. Um, in terms of, I think another speaker said that, I mean, we are a public I mean, we are a public organization, so anybody can fore our documents, but again, this will increase transparency and we want that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can we maybe just, just clarify, there was, there was discussion of payout of two settlements. To my knowledge, settlement does not acknowledge fault on either party, correct?
Yeah, I'd prefer to.
Well, I know a lot, a lot of stuff.
Talk about it during, during our time on it as opposed to interrupting the public hearing for that, if that's okay? When we have, when we come to forest for a vote and we'll have a chance to answer those questions and. Is there any other members of the public who would like to be heard on this?
We have a couple of hands raised online.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did Pete, did, do we have somebody online?
Yes, we do have a couple of hands raised online. Uh, one's been for a while. If you want to switch back and forth, I could put one through now.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be wonderful. Thank you, Pete. Alan, thank you for joining us. If you can hear us, please identify yourself and, and your affiliation in Orno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan Cobal Lewis, living at 19 Winter Haven Drive in Orno. Speaking in favor of the proposal. I listen with interest, the concern about stigmatization, and I'll just say that, you know, there's, there's, there's stigma all around. There's stigma in settling. There's stigma in not settling. You know, stigma against the town, against the, the management of the town, the employee. The fact is that the ordinance, the proposal already, already, already provides for executive session. So the sensitive discussions can happen in executive session where appropriate. And then what gets public is, you know, a motion on what, on, on whether, on whether to approve of the settlement. And that's completely appropriate. Can things be politicized? Sure. Counselors can make, you know, can make decisions that may not be good for the town. And then the consequence of that may be that they don't win reelection. The consequence of that, if a reasonable settlement is rejected by the town, maybe that the complainant, that the plaintiff takes the next step. And, you know, the threat of that will, 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 uh, you know, create an incentive to settle like, you know, like Leo mentioned that, that settlement doesn't always admit guilt. I did, you know, I have, I have read the full, the full proposal. It seems to me that it strike a pretty good balance between these competing interests, between public transparency. And, and, you know, the, the responsibility for large expenditures to be in the hands of the elected officials of the town, which I think is appropriate. And, um, you know, the, the state laws governing executive session already try to strike a balance as well. And so I'm actually pretty comfortable with what's being proposed. And I want to thank all of you for, for crafting language that, that strikes these balances appropriately. You know, it was, it requires a lot of work and a lot of thought. It's obviously a sensitive issue. And I think it's time to, to pass this. And I'll feel a lot more comfortable with the town afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you, Alan. Pete, during that, I, I got, received a text that someone, Alinda, that would be said that the Facebook feed's not working. I don't know if that's something we can address for folks or not, but.
Yes, unfortunately, Facebook is having technical difficulties. It seems to cut out. And so we've directed people to the Zoom.
Okay. Thank you very much. So let's take, do you want to take one more online and then Jeff, is that okay? We'll go one more online, then we'll go back to you. Yep. Thank you. Jen, could you introduce yourself and provide your comments, please?
Yep. My name is Jen Wingard, and I just have a couple of comments about this. I actually have a personal experience with filing a lawsuit with the Maine Human Rights Commission and, and was successful and do have a non-disclosure. So with that in mind, not violating that, I don't talk about it. It was much larger employer than the town of Orno. I think that if this passes, we are at the whim of who we have on town council. This particular town council is very political, is extremely political. And we do run the risk of, you know, creating some different problems. So, you know, I, I am not in support of it. I'm in support of transparency. But we need to think about our community and think about people's privacy. Maybe some people want their business spread around town. Other people don't. And the more people that are in these conversations and voting, the more likely it is that people's private information is going to be dispersed. And not everybody wants their life talked about in every household. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Jen. Jeff, do you want to come up? Thank you.
Jeff Gordon, 22 Hamlin in Orno. And I do pay to my taxes. I urge the council to, to vote no when this comes up for vote. I have significant concerns about this amendment to the ordinance. I submitted my concerns in a collaborative document on the internet. I received a response from two counselors, a verbal response. And a third counselor told me that they would get back to me and seriously consider my comments and get back to me, but they never did. So my comments are unaddressed for the most part, although some changes were made that did accommodate some of my comments. Preceding speakers here have already made many of the cases, case points that I was going to bring up, so I won't bother you with those. I am not here in response to any recent action or any recent case that the council had entertained. I am here looking forward to the future. Future complaints, future claims of harassment and how the council is going to handle those. If the council has problems with how these cases are handled, then they need to look at the, the personnel ordinance that's in the book. And if they find fault with that ordinance, they need to amend that ordinance. I understand this amendment is an amendment to that ordinance. Unfortunately, I find this amendment to be very poorly thought out. And it seems to me to be a solution searching for a problem. I do not understand what problem this amendment solves. And no one has told me what that problem is. And I would like to know what the council thinks about that. And when you discuss this, when it comes up for a vote, I hope that's part of the discussion. What problem is being solved by this amendment? The relation, there were several comments made about the relationship between the council and the manager. The council and the manager make their own relationship. Any counselor at any time can make a motion to go into executive session to discuss an issue about personnel at any time. If the council hasn't done that or hasn't asked the manager questions about a forthcoming case, I'd say the fault lies with the council, not necessarily with the manager. A manager can, of course, keep things secret and not confer with the council. That's always a possibility. But again, it's up to the council to manage the relationship between the council and the manager. The way this ordinance amendment is worded, I left it back there. The fact that the town manager is specifically mentioned in D3 tells me that there is a problem with trust between the council and the manager. If there is an issue of trust between the council and the manager, that's for the council to address with the manager in executive session. It's an issue to be addressed with the manager when the manager is reviewed, which is supposed to happen every year, if there is a lack of trust. That's unacceptable. You can't work that way. I'm curious to know whether or not this amendment has been passed by the Maine Department of Labor or the Human Rights Commission or any labor attorney. Not necessarily the town attorney, but the labor attorney. Labor law is complex. You need a labor attorney to address the issues. I don't know. You, perhaps you have checked with all of these individuals. I don't know. Another one that, or entities, I don't know. Another issue is have you consulted with the town's insurance carrier? Are they going to be happy with having spent time and money coming to a negotiated agreement that is agreed to by both the employee and by the town? Are they going to be happy to have that come to a public vote and have you vote no? What are the consequences of a no vote? And if the consequences are not attractive, and you don't want to bring it up for a public vote, the public is no place to discuss personnel matters. These are just my opinions. You can take them or leave them. It also exposes the town to what I think is potentially extreme liability, financial liability. These agreements, these negotiated agreements can take months or even years sometimes to reach an agreement stage that comes to the, to the satisfaction of both parties. It could take years sometimes. This amendment produces the possibility where an issue, the vote is brought to the public and half the council members had nothing to do with the case. They have no knowledge of the case because it all happened two years ago. You can have an uninitiated, brand-new counselor, no offense, Jacob, voting on an issue in public and possibly commenting. They're uninitiated. They don't understand the consequences of this words that come out of their mouth in public. The wrong words come out. You, bang, you're right back in court with a bigger lawsuit than you ever imagined you might have. Possibly. I'm not saying it would, but possibly. I would urge you to look at my collaborative document that I submitted, look at my comments. There's, there's place there where you can fill in your response and send it back to me. I'd appreciate that before you bring this up for a vote.
Thank you. To the extent that counselors would choose to respond, I think we need to be careful about collaborating on a shared document because of the provisions against making decisions outside of a public meeting. So I would just raise that point. So I would encourage people to respond to anyone as they feel appropriate individually, but you just need to be careful that we don't amend a document together online that way, as, as Google documents can allow you to do, which they're designed to do that, but, you know, our ordinances are not. So, thank you. Is there anyone else who has a comment on the ordinance before us? Okay, Pete, no one online?
No hands raised online at this time.
Thank you for monitoring. And with that, we will close the public hearing on a potential liability for claims of harassment, discrimination. And we will move on to public hearing B to consider a class 1A malt liquor and wine hotel liquor license for HSRPG Orno Master Tenant LLC, DBA Hotel Ursa, Humane Campus, One Moosehead Road. And we approved the victual's license on this January 2024. And there's our code enforcement officer.
All right.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Patrick Esti, code enforcement officer, and recommendations are based off police, fire, and our lovely town clerk. And we are recommending for approval on this one.
Anyone have any questions for Pat? Thank you. Are there any comments on, I guess it would be a first, but any comments on a, on this public hearing on class 1A malt liquor, wine, et cetera, et cetera? Okay, with that, we will close this public hearing and move on to item nine on our agenda, acknowledgements by council members. And we will start. It okay if I start with Leo Kenny? Cause I think he's got a very personal matter he wants to share with us. I want to make sure nobody beats him to it.
Appreciate that. I have two. I would like to acknowledge Rob Yerxa, who I think is not here today, but for his, I think, 12 years of service. Rob is, is the consummate pro professional here. I think he's built an incredible team in the public works. He's created an infrastructure investment plan to help us avoid major spikes, which is really, I think, put us in a good position and will be incredibly valuable for the next person that comes in to fill his role. It also, I think, has to be acknowledged that I don't know anyone that is better with the public than, than Rob. I think, again, he's just, just just such a pro. And I, I, I think it's unanimous, anyone that's ever commented on anything to do with having to work with Rob just over the, over the years. So I'm a bit anxious, but hopeful that our next director of public works will also possess this ability. Though for sure, meeting Rob's level will be a tall order. So I want to say thanks and acknowledge and wish, wish Rob well in his new, new endeavors. So that's one. The next one is of course to acknowledge Ed Catala, his assistant coaches in the OHS Red Riot basketball team. Sorry, I never turned that on. For their second state class B title, back-to-back titles. Had a really impressive run through the tourney with Caribou, Ellsworth, and Old Town, and then faced the same team they faced last year with Oceanside and came out as state champs once again. So definitely would like to acknowledge that team and their efforts and thanks for letting me go first.
You're welcome. And we'll start on Councilor Lawway's end of the table and move our way back over to Councilor Powers. And I guess I'd go last is the, oh, and we gotta get Sarah too. We'll get Councilor Marx as well. Councilor Lawway.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody who helped out, including town staff who worked on the recent election. Seemed like everything went really smoothly. Really appreciate all the work and organization that goes into that.
Jake, Council Baker?
Thank you. Despite having seen these meetings and knowing this was coming up, I didn't have anything other than to thank all of you all for helping me learn about this, this new role. I, I am excited about it and I ask your forgiveness now for probably all of the obvious whys and hows that I, I will be asking over the next three years. Thank you.
Councilor Berthel?
I'd like to acknowledge everyone who is here and who was here giving public comments and being part of tonight's meeting. It's really great when we have members of the public here, even and maybe especially when there is difference of opinion and we get to look at a, you know, a question like, should we amend our ordinances from multiple different perspectives? I think that that diversity of perspective and willingness to share is really healthy and wonderful and celebrate everyone who is here tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Powers?
I'd like to thank Chief Merrill for the presence that he appropriated to the hockey game on Saturday night. I really like to see, I actually really appreciate the collaboration between the police department here in Orno and the police department at the university. And I love to go to a really rowdy, really fun, really exciting event and know it's going to be a safe time. And go Maine Black Bears. Woo! It was a fun hockey game.
You're out of order, so. That's the only time I'm ever going to use that gavel. Councilor Marx?
Thanks. I'd like to acknowledge our town manager's search advisory committee who met for the first time last Wednesday and did a great job of that initial. last Wednesday and did a great job of that initial meeting. Just grateful for all of them serving and also for all the people who volunteered to serve. I know that we had so many, we was a very hard choice, but grateful to all and also grateful for all the candidates who ran in this last election, whether elected or not. I really appreciated how everyone conducted themselves and what a great election it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And I will finish by acknowledging, I want to thank Scott Thomas for running for the council and everyone who ran for council. I think giving voters a choice is such an important part of our process. And I want to thank everyone who contributes to that, being successful. And with that, we will close the acknowledgement section of our meeting and move on to unfinished business. We apparently have no unfinished business. Then we should acknowledge former Chair Wingard for his good work in getting us to this meeting with no unfinished business. The next item, item 11 on our agenda is a consent agenda. And people can still ask if stuff pulled off at this point, right? So the consent agenda is moved and voted as a single action with no discussion by town counselors or members of the public. A member of the council or the public can request that an order on the consent agenda be removed and added to new business to allow for explanation and discussion prior to the vote. Entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Councilor Larway. Can we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Powers. All in favor, and we'll have to do a roll call and we'll, don't forget me this time. We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Demerit?
In favor. Thank you.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Councilor Laraway?
In favor.
Councilor Berthel?
In favor.
And Councilor Marks?
In favor.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. After orders on a new business are read by the council chair, other members of the council will move in second that they be placed on the floor for discussion. The chair will recognize staff to provide background and then open the floor for discussion. It is at this time that members of the public can be recognized, asked questions, and provide comments. Those who wish to speak are asked to come to the microphone or raise their hand on Zoom, state their name and affiliation, and then briefly address the Town Council Chair. Our first order is Order 2441, Order Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into an Agreement with Reynolds Sis Corporation of Indianapolis, Indiana for a total cost of $91,400 for the installation of a new PCV membrane for the Nickerson Pool.
Move approved? Yeah, move approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And we would welcome to the podium, member of the staff.
Hello, everyone. Megan Mazzella, Parks and Rec Director. I'm here presenting the information on the new pool liner used in payment by ARPA funds outlined in the memo I provided to council and was discussed on the last committee meeting. There'd be no changes to this order as as given to you currently.
Anyone have any questions for Megan?
The only, the question I had, I think there's $30,000 charge for the reworking, probably the concrete slab or something around. It's like a public works kind of charge. And I assume just want to confirm that that's like a material charge. There's not like a charge system between rec and public works. That's just for materials, I assume.
Correct. There is no charge between the Rec Department and the Public Works Department as we're both town staff. We do need fill in for the around the pool. It is still unearthed as well as the concrete and the sealant on top. So those are where the material costs come from.
Thank you.
Are there any, any other questions? Well, I'd like to thank you for stepping up and helping with this project and bringing it to our attention. It's, the pool is a very valued resource in our community. And with that, we will entertain a roll call vote on Order 2444. Nope. Order 2442. I'm sorry. Or 2441. Thank you. Order 2441. It's been moved and seconded, and we will have a roll call vote. Clerk will call.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Demerit?
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Councilor Laraway?
In favor.
Councilor Berthel?
In favor.
And Councilor Marks?
In favor.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you. And next is on our new business agenda is Order 2442, Order Authorizing the Town Manager to Expend $150,000 for the Nickerson Pool Project with the funds drawn from the American Rescue Plan Act.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. And Megan?
So this order is connected to the previous order you had just approved. The reason why it has split up is because one is to enter the agreement. Two is to expend the funds specifically out of the ARPA monies we have allotted for this project. That is the total cost for this project, not any one individual. So that includes the the price of the contract, which includes the labor in the liner, as well as the material costs Leo had just brought up and contingency.
Just realized I asked my question out of order, so this, I won't ask it again.
I'll just say thank you for bringing this to us. I know that people in town really value the pool. This is a service that everybody seems to really care a lot about, so I'm glad to vote in favor of it when we come to a vote.
I would, I would ask, if there are no other questions, I would ask, Megan, what do you, what do you think we'll do you have any expectations in terms of how we can manage, we will be able to manage expectations of the public around access to the pool this summer? I know that when we talked two weeks ago, we hadn't approved a contract, we hadn't entered a contract. Is there any, do you have any additional thoughts for us or?
So the timeline for the project will be contingent on the signature of the agreement as well as the signature of the the party on the other side. This is all conversational at this point. They would provide a timeline for that project to be done at that point. In the conversations I had had with this specific contractor, they were quite confident that we would be able to swim this summer. Construction season can change, depending when we I should be able to have this to the contractor tomorrow. You know, along with any approvals. But I would be able to provide that timeline to council once conversations were had with the contractor to finalize those, those details.
Thank you so much. I know it would be important to, we should have probably had it at the first item on our agenda today, so you'd have been more time to get it to the vendor, but with nothing else, we'll call a roll call. The clerk will call a roll on Order 2442.
Councilor Powers?
Approved.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Councilor Laraway?
In favor.
Councilor Berthel?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
And Councilor Demerit?
In favor.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you, Megan. Next item on our agenda is Order 2443, in order directing the town manager to work with the residents of the Orno Basin neighborhood to organize possible improvements to the Union Street Boat Launch and provide a recommended plan to the council that is within the $10,000 budget.
So moved.
Seconded.
As I shared with the council individually by email earlier today, I, we've worked closely with the Basin neighborhood from, we started back in June, I think it was, when Taylor Ashley reached out to us after cleaning, after taking part in the Town Cleanup Day, asking about an opportunity to do an improvement project in the Basin neighborhood. And over the course of several months, including a block party in the Basin that many of us attended and a committee, a committee meeting, a community meeting at OBC where people brainstormed about possible opportunities. And this council agreeing to set aside up to $10,000 in resources to support the project. We've had, we've gotten to the point where staff and the community would bring back, you know, we have to, this council will have to decide what that final proposal is gonna, is gonna be that we will, we'll vote on, consider and approve. So I've, I would like to offer an amendment to Order 2443 that strikes the printed agenda language and replaces it. Should I read it? Probably should, huh?
Yep.
Yep. I have handed out copies, but the amendment that I'm recommending is to strike the printed agenda language and replace with the following. Order directing the town manager to form a Union Street Boat Launch Working Group to be led jointly by the Director of Orno Parks and Recreation and Basin Neighborhood Resident Taylor Ashley for the purpose of presenting the council with a preferred alternative for boat launch improvements for consideration at or before its June 10, 2024 meeting. The Boat Launch Working Group will build on existing staff work and continued engagement with Basin Neighborhood residents to prepare at least two alternatives for improvements to the Union Street Boat Launch property that could be advanced in the 2024 construction season. The alternatives should utilize existing municipal resources, services, the $10,000 provided by the council through Order 23169 and readily available additional resources. The Boat Launch Working Group will collect community input on at least two improvement alternatives through a survey instrument prior to submitting its preferred alternative to the council. The working group will provide regular updates to the council on its work through the town manager's reports and is encouraged to request more time if needed. So I would move that and I suppose entertain a second if that's
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Powers. The discussion on the amendment. Councilor Kenny? I knew this was coming.
Tried. Yeah, I have, I do, I guess, I'd like to understand if there's ever, if there's a precedence for having I guess my, my short, short concern is that I think this needs to be led by staff. I don't know if there's any precedence of assigning a project to staff and a community member or not. Maybe there is, but I'd like to know that before we go down that path. I, I think there's there's a possibility when doing that, I mean, I how would you choose somebody to do that? I, I think there are a lot of potential downfalls to suggesting that we put a community member co-in charge of a community project with the town. That just, that just sits uneasy for me. So I'm not in favor of the amendment. That's one, one piece. And the, the second piece is I do think we also, I, we haven't, we're not assigning any, any timelines to this, but just a reminder for all of us, council, that we are probably 80 hours a week short based on current staffing, and that's increasing by another, who knows, 50 or 60 hours coming up by the end of the week. So I have concerns about adding new projects to the docket of existing staff who I think is already spread quite thin covering the lack of hours in a week that we have currently based on the lack of staff. So I'm in favor of the amendment, not of, not of the amendment. I'm in favor of the motion as originally written with the caveat that we need to make sure that we're not imposing any crazy timelines. And and we, I think we really need to hear back from staff on a suitable timeline. So but I'm not in favor of, of the amendment for the reasons I just expressed. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I guess I would say I think what Leo raised makes a lot of sense. I am sort of really excited, not sort of really excited, I'm really excited about all the momentum down in that neighborhood. A lot of people having ideas and wanting to get going with all sorts of potential projects down there. And I'm excited about this order. I'm not sure. I guess this is sort of the first time I'm really able to reflect on the amendment language change. And I'm curious, has there been any discussion with say, our Parks and Rec's director or Taylor Ashley about launching a formal working group as opposed to leaving it a little vaguer up to the discretion of the town manager and the rest of staff?
Sure. Taylor has seen it and he was excited about it. Taylor has been, Taylor is the community member who really brought us, brought it to us. He's, he's been the person who's, he walked door to door in the neighborhood to make sure people knew about the events that were going on. And he's been a lot, he's provided a lot of the energy in behind, we wouldn't be here talking about this wasn't for Taylor. So I see a path forward where community leaders, whether they're elected or they step up, you know, leadership is action, not position, you know, and I see opportunities for community leaders to work to, you know, deputize themselves to take something on, to work side by side with, with our staff when appropriate. And I think that, you know, I wrote it this way because I know that Megan would work with community members to bring us a proposal to the town manager. The town manager would direct the Parks and Rec to work with us on this. And I wanted to provide, I'd, I'd like to see us get in the habit of being really clear what our, what our expectations are, who's gonna be involved so that we know how to follow things, we know what we decided to do and what the expectations are. I'm very happy to be alter this to provide more time or, you know, do other things based on the suggestion of staff and want to be very supportive. But we ultimately need something, someone to bring us something that we can approve and or consider. And this was, I thought a path forward for that. Thank you for the question.
You know, I think that makes a lot of sense. I also, I, I see the value in you setting up a sort of a particular date for us to get something more concrete back. I wonder if it might make sense, instead of amending in this way, seeing sort of what comes from initial engagement with the residents and what sort of organization might come out of that interaction? Depending on sort of what kind of, I keep saying sort of, what kind of projects gain some interest and momentum and maybe in a committee meeting, we might be able to come to more concrete direction to the town manager about how exactly this work ought to go. I just don't want to over prescribe sort of what this needs to be. And also for Leo's suggestion or concern, putting something on the Parks and Rec's director's plate without sort of coming to some understanding of what is needed.
Councilor Powers?
Just two quick things. One, I like I think one of the things that as I have talked to citizens, they would like to see things move, move along. And what I like about this process is you have somebody in the basin who really, really cares about getting the project done and wants to move on there. And as much as possible, and, and a group of citizens there, I would like to see that outcome come and, and not bog it down. There's so many discussions and bureaucracy that it ends up being like two years down the road and we're still talking about it. Not that I think this council would do that. So I like that. But, but I also want to be super respectful of this town staff's time because I know, but I also hope we can outsource that to some of the community members as best that we can. And, and have those community members be empowered to take pride in, in the things that they love about Orano.
Council Baker?
Yes, just two questions. And so I'm feverishly trying to find the original ordinance, but can you just give a summary of what the amendment? Okay.
So to answer Jacob's question, what's in the council agenda is just a much briefer statement that in my view, could probably do the same thing, but but with less specificity.
Perfect. Thank you. Second question then. What is, do we have a process for determining projects like this? I mean, what if the Webster Park neighborhood comes to us with a great idea? How did, and again, sorry, I'm new to this, but how did this get on the agenda? What was the process that led us to here? In very high-level summary, I'm fine with that.
We heard, we heard a community member come forward with an idea. And we wanted to bring, you know, empower that community member's energy and then the energy that came from the neighborhood. I think that's as much.
No, I mean, I think the other piece is how the money was appropriated to it, which if recollection serves, it was in the fall when we had a meeting at which to discuss.
Carryforward, if you will.
Carryforward funds and uses of carryforward funds. And I believe that this was allocated. Carryforward funds and uses of carryforward funds and I believe that this was allocated um, to this purpose at that time along with several other projects that council saw fit to allocate money toward.
And just to give you a little bit of a timeline, this goes all the way back to last summer. So this is, and it's been discussed like in multiple meetings here since last summer so that you can understand what the time, it didn't, didn't come to us like last month.
And we, we did have, we've had, I think at least two committee meeting, we had a committee meeting um, where staff went through, you know, it, it started with the, the former town manager giving us like a sandbox document of what was possible at the parcel, which is very helpful. We brought it to the tech, the, the neighborhood, had a discussion and then we had a brainstorming session and, and some of the Basin Neighborhood residents were there, who were there at that session are here with us this evening to talk about idea, brainstorm things that were, we wanted to, you know, could, we could do and that amounts to, it's about forty four thousand dollars in projects. Love the ambition, but we have to have some people have, make an informed choice based on what's on that list, what works. And then this envisions a process by which, you know, you keep the, the neighborhood residents involved in, informed and then bring something out as a survey instrument that the whole community can respond to and ta, taking what you learn from that, bringing it back to us for the, the yays or the nays on whether we approve the process. I'm certainly open to suggestions from the town manager on that we could take the due date out, we could do all the things. I would like to get a monthly update on the progress until it's done, but I'm happy to, happy to get, and it could be ten words and hey, we had a meeting or we weren't able to meet, but I want, I'd like us to be in a position as a council where we show people what the, the, the progress that's being made and the meetings that are happening, so. Cornell, do you have any thoughts or?
Well, you mentioned that you wanted to have directive uh, uh, from the council be clear what you're doing. And to me, it was clear, the council wanted a recommendation from staff after working with uh, involving uh, citizens at the Union Street boat launch area and come back with a recommended plan within the ten thousand dollar budget. Four more paragraphs of what we're to do just seems overly complex for uh, this, this project. You just approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project for Megan to oversee. This time of year is when most rec programs get going, she's gonna be very busy. I think putting this restrictions of um, the committee um, regular updates, um, two alternatives. Um, I just think it's excessive. And I recommend that you just go with the original language and we'll come back with a plan.
Can, can I, I did ask, ask a question kind of generally there, but I agree with that, of course, I've already said that. Have we, is there a precedence where we've had staff and just, I don't know, just but a community member co-managing an, an initiative? You, you, I guess, we don't have enough experience here at the table to probably answer the question, to be honest. Uh, I don't know if, if that is a concern. Um, if you're familiar with that type of arrangement from where you've been previously, Cornell, or again, it, that just feels out of sorts to me, that I think if we have a project or, that we're assigning to staff, then staff needs to be responsible in that.
No, I have not come across that in my previous work.
We've now, so you're asking if there's ever like an incident where a government institution appoints a committee of staff and members of the public to work together in, on, on a project?
No, there's been, I think there's plenty that where we work together, but it's led by staff in, in any instance I've ever seen happen here. It's, is led, like, that, that's the troubling piece to be, to be led jointly. I just think that's not the way we go about it and, and you're saying that I think maybe longer term you like that, you want to go that direction. I'm personally, I'm not ready to go that direction and, and I would, I would want inputs as to, you know, no, I hate to not get into liability and whatnot, but I mean, I, I don't think, um, I just don't, I don't think it's good precedence to set.
I think I would propose, since we've heard that the um, the kind of detail in this is not incompatible with the original language. The original language, I think, has pretty broad understanding and support as a path forward and also there is good community engagement that I think probably will organically follow this longer language that we might move ahead with the um, the kind of original language in our agenda and um, call it a day, given that this is a fairly low budget project and we have other things to attend to today, but.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Um, I, thank you for bringing this. Um, I mean, I, I, I think I will vote against it, uh, the amendment, but for all the reasons we've been discussing, but I, I, I appreciate your intention and I think um, it's really clear the desire to make sure that we're in good faith engaging with that community, that neighborhood and make sure that we're following through. And so I, I appreciate sort of the, the push of this, even though I, I do think probably the original order makes a little bit more sense, gives more flexibility to staff to make sure that this is done in a way that we're not sort of fiddling with too much.
Hi, can
Well, I do say that, you know,
Dan.
Leader with no follow, it's just a guy walking around, so in terms of, in terms of this, I, if you're open to it, Matt, I'll withdraw my amendment and we can move to the, the good, the good motion that Cornell has provided us with. Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no trouble. I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with that as a way to go forward. Um, I guess I just did want to say that this is not really so much specific to here because I really hear that this maybe isn't something that we've thought through exactly who would be in charge and that this might be more detailed than what's really needed for this project and that the timelines don't work and staff needs to take the lead, all those things make sense to me. The one thing I want to say though is that I do like the idea of us as a council beginning to look at how we would structure working groups that we would send off to work on projects and bring back to us. And I would like those working groups ultimately, maybe not for this project, maybe this is too small to need one as I've heard people say, but I like the idea of working groups that have community members appointed to them and counselors appointed to them and staff appointed to them to work together. Um, because I do feel like that's often the most efficient way to get the detail part of a project done and then brought back to council, obviously, for discussion and vote and perhaps sent back to a working group if it's not at a point where council is ready to move forward, but as we look at ourselves and how to be sure that we're increasing citizen involvement and empowering citizen involvement um, and also being efficient in how we move things forward as a council, I actually think the working group idea is a good one for us to um, pursue and keep in mind and to look at going forward, even if we're not likely to look at it here. And I also think, I like the idea that when residents are being involved with staff in the planning of a project, I think it's appropriate to name those residents so that it's transparent to the public on which residents are working with Parks and Rec to develop this plan. Um, so perhaps we don't know that at this point and, you know, Parks and Rec is gonna, I don't know, send out a survey to every resident in the basin, I'm not sure how Parks and Rec is planning to proceed on this, but um, I think in general we're, working in a way where our staff says, you know, we'd like a working group on this or council says and works with staff together to get that idea formalized and then appointing who those community members are for each working group is important just for transparency to the public, um, who's involved and how to reach out. So I, I don't know, I hope that wasn't a distraction off of getting back to the vote, but I think some parts of this are really valuable and we should look at them going forward and how we structure future projects. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Marks, and I, I suppose in withdrawing my amendment, if Councilor Powers is okay to withdraw his second, I, I will say that these are the types of questions I'll have when the project comes back. How was the, how was the basin, neighbors in the basin communicated with about the alternatives? How was, you know, how did we learn, how did we come up with a preferred alternative in terms of the forty four thousand dollars in infrastructure that was in the Excel spreadsheet that was given to us before? So those kinds of things will be front of mind for me as a council when this comes back, so.
Can I just, can I just, I guess, once again, put in the plug? Uh, because I think all of those things are really great sort of methods and, and ways to engage and report on the public, but, but um, I feel, again, feel like we keep sort of giving lip service to the fact that we are short-staffed and every, every one of those things, I think, you know, how, how are you communicating to the, to the, to the residents in the basin, all of those sorts of details? Um, I, I feel like we probably should take those back on ourselves and like, that, and not stack up, you know, making this project into a, into a bigger project that, that again is overworking and overworked staff, so I, I really want to be, I, I guess I'll be the broken record and keep sort of bringing this up when it, when, as I'm hearing it, I'm, I'm real concerned about over, overpromising and overtaxing a, a stretched thin staff and, and I want us to be really cognizant of that in everything we're doing, so I'm, I'm bringing it up again.
Yep.
Yeah, and Leo, I really agree about that and that's part of why I really feel like ultimately creating working groups where there's an appointed person, so all staff has to do is be working with whoever the one or two people that council appointed on a working group is a much simpler process than expecting staff to go out and put out entire surveys again when there've already been public meetings. We've had a lot of public stuff about this, but I think um, knowing who those point people are could be valuable in the future, it could even be valuable now if we know, but I'm under the impression that we don't and there wasn't enough discussion for how Parks and Rec wants to structure this on this one. Thanks.
And sorry, one more, to that, to that end, we have, there has been a ton and I think I, I do want to echo, I love the enthusiasm that came from Taylor uh, at the last meeting and, and clearly, you know, we have some basin residents here now, so I, I do believe it's happening. Making it become this cumbersome thing where it has to be reported out on and stuff is, is what I have concerns with, so. Thanks.
Okay, so I believe that I've withdrawn my amendment and if that's
I've withdrawn the second.
Oh, second to withdraw the amendment?
Yep.
And um, so the order before the council is order twenty four forty three uh, order directing the town manager to work with residents, the Orno Basin Neighborhood to organize possible improvements to the Union Street boat launch and provide a recommended plan to the council that is within the ten thousand dollar budget. Is there any discussion on the amendment now and, and the order now on the table? It's been moved and seconded, so we will call the roll.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
Favor.
Councilor Leraway?
In favor.
Councilor Berthasell?
In favor.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
And Councilor Demarek?
In favor.
And that's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, the next order before the council is order, this is actually mine, so I don't have to
That's yours.
Yeah, thank you. Um, order twenty four forty four, order authorizing the town manager to enter, enter into an agreement with Sebago Techniques of South Portland, Maine for facilities planning for the town office building at a cost not to exceed twenty six thousand five hundred dollars drawn from the FY twenty four capital facilities budget for public safety building upgrades.
So
Councilor Kenny?
Um, I guess I would like to move that we table this item.
Do we have to bring it to, to on the floor first before we table it?
I don't know.
I'm asking the clerk, so.
If, if I want to table, is that a move, move to table?
Okay. There's a motion to table, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the, on the table, on the motion to table?
Uh, I'd be curious to just know a little bit more, I know you sent an email to us, I didn't quite understand the uh, the reason for the potential tabling, but if you want to go.
Yeah, yep. I, I, I had um, sent an email to you folks um, looking, I, I reviewed the current proposal compared to a proposal we had in October twenty two, sixteen months ago. Um, that was very detailed and it was very similar in my view. Similar proposal, a very similar price and a much broader scope. So I had questions that I think I would like to have answered in committee as to the difference, the, the difference in scope, how much broader that was, yet the same pricing, so I, I just, I would like to bring this back and uh, have a little more of a discussion in committee comparing the two quotes.
Would you like to amend your motion to refer it to a committee?
Oh, yeah, table to, to subcommittee. Yeah, okay, ref, okay, refer to committee.
Yes.
Sorry, I wasn't on mic, but I wasn't as funny as I wanted to be, but um, so Councilor Kenny, will you motion to refer to committee?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Refer to committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We discuss it, right? Any discussion on the motion to refer to assume the finance and operations committee? Okay, if there are no
No, but I do, I do want to um, I realize this thing has been going on, I, I think to the best of my knowledge since May of twenty one, that's the first memo I've seen, I'm sure Jake, you've, Jacob, you've seen nothing or know nothing about this, so. Um, it, it's been going on a long time, I, I'm not looking to, to drag it out any further and I would, I guess further add that um, you know, if, if this thing moves forward right now, we're still a couple of years away from anything substantive happening with regards to a big project. Um, I want to put out there, I guess, on the table, that the original document, and again, I think what kicked this off in May of twenty one uh, was from the chief at, the uh, Chief Low uh, and Chief Ewing at that time. With a, a long list of concerns or issues that they had, so. And we've obviously since had studies, this, most of this council has toured the building. I think everyone agrees things need to uh, be addressed. I would put out there that in addition to this unfortunately slowing it down, if there are, I, I'm personally interested to hear um, from staff or from management, uh, from the chiefs, if you will, um, if there are really hot button or, or pressing items that need, that they feel need, I mean, there's, like I said, there's an engineering study and all that, but um, I, I'd like to understand if there are, you know, things that we might be able to click off in the next year um, that could be addressed um, that are that are not allowing, or, I mean, I think we have two highly functioning departments. Uh, they do an amazing job, they're in the, and they're working in that facility. Uh, if there are any major deficits that they feel need to come forward that we need to consider outside of this process, I'd like to hear that, so I want to put that word out there.
Any further comments? So we have a motion on the table to refer this item to finance, the finance committee and I would call, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Powers?
In favor.
Councilor Kenny?
In favor.
Councilor Baker?
In favor.
Councilor Leraway?
In favor.
Councilor Berthasell?
I think I'm opposed, I would have just as soon moved ahead with this, but I also look forward to discussing it in committee.
Councilor Marks?
In favor.
Councilor Demarek?
In favor.
Motion is approved with one opposed and I have notated for the record.
Okay, well, thank you for that and the next item on our agenda is future agenda, agenda items and items of concern. I have a few that I'd like to at least share with people as we get started, if that's, um, and I wanted to first thank everyone for um, their support, um, their, for me serving as this council's chair and I look very much forward to working with uh, Councilor Marks very collaboratively as vice chair. So thank you, Sarah, for stepping up and for that role as well. Um, just to, for the council's awareness and thoughts in terms of upcoming agenda items. Sarah and I have um, first of all, there's committee, committee assignments, so to the extent that we have standing committees that people need to, to serve on and the council will need to appoint those by an order. Isn't that correct, Madam Clerk? So we will um, put an order on our next, at our next business meeting to that, my hope is to have an My hope is to have an order on the agenda of our next business meeting or special council meeting. That has, uh, has committee assignments. So to the extent that people have a preference on the committees they'd like to serve on, please send an email to. Myself and, uh, we will keep track of that. And I, I would welcome people to copy Sarah as well, though of course we'll have to be careful that we don't make decisions. Via email, um, in those. So to the extent that you have a committee that you prefer to serve on, please send those along. Any questions about that?
And Cornell.
And Cornell, of course. Sorry. Yep. Yep, that's right. Um. Second, um, we had a discussion about the facilities. Facilities today. I'm interested in, in having a conversation about, and Sarah talked about the working groups, but kind of a, a sense of where the council wants to go on. The public safety building is, is a, is an initiative that's fits and starts and hasn't really made a lot of progress. I, I would like to challenge us to think more comprehensively about our facilities needs in, in the community. We have a library project that is. Has supports and, and is likely moving forward pending, you know, federal action on a, on a grant to, to Orno. We have, um, reports that we've received. Jacob, you've got a lot of reading to do, but we've got reports on. Four town facilities, the Keith Anderson Building, the Birch Street School, the Webster Fire Station. And the former public safety, public works building. And we have the recent Matt Powers. Walkthrough of municipal space where he identified, he, uh, staff was able to share with him some ideas and thoughts and in. Opportunities for improvement in that space. So to the extent that we. I think we. Challenge us to think comprehensively about those needs and do things to collectively as, as opposed to one project at a time. So we think, um, comprehensively of what Orno's municipal needs are and where we go from there. So that, that's something I'm interested in having on our agenda. And, uh, Council Marks and I are going to review, um, our meeting protocols and our policies and procedures manual. And bring back some thoughts for this council to, we'll talk about in committee. But, and if people have thoughts about how we could improve our process and the timeliness of the things that we do, provide more accountability. My goal is, as the chair of this council, is to help. Every counselor and, you know, through counselors, citizens of Orno, get a chance to move things quickly to decisions and, and action. And, and have an opportunity to work through the process here to the point where they get a boat on something and they get a decision, a final decision on, on something that's of concern to them or of interest to them. So I would encourage any counselor who wants to see something on an agenda. To, to let me know and I, I really see it as a servant leadership opportunity in terms of bringing, you know, creating agendas and moving things forward in a, in a. In a fashion that people can follow. So, I don't know, Sarah, if you have something you'd like to add to that or?
That's good.
Okay.
I did have a very, very small thing, just I know this went out in an email also, but the Orno Economic Development Corporation is meeting this Thursday. And although I am officially the representative, I cannot attend that meeting. They haven't met in a while. Mr. Gordon, if he's still there, could probably say more about that, but if another counselor is available on Thursday night. At six thirty, I think it would be wonderful to have a council rep attend that meeting. So. Please reach out to me if you're available to attend or simply reach out to Mr. Gordon and go. Thank you.
Do we have a volunteer for that since we're all here together now, or I can do it if I am hustling back from out of town, but I could do it. Yep. Okay. Looks like it's me. I don't have to move tables and chairs, do I? It's not like a potluck. So, yeah. See, I, I will if they need me to. So I got no, um, all right, I'll reach out to Jeff Gordon and let him know. He's, he's not with us right now. If there are no more items of concern or future gen items, it's now time for the town manager's report. Counselor Powers.
Cornell, I don't think your microphone is on. I can't actually hear you.
Oh, how about now?
Now I can. Thank you.
Yeah, that's because it wasn't on. You did get another mini grant application today, so I didn't know whether you wanted to bring that up and I didn't know whether. We put the one from last week committees on. Assuming you had answers to the questions you had.
Council Powers, do you have anything on the?
I'll, um, just give you a brief in the email I sent to the counselor. Sorry, I may have. Not sent it to you, Cornell, and I apologize. We got, um, the reply, this is from Holly Twining and the yoga. Adventures, main yoga adventures. She, um, did, her proposal is for everybody and she was fine with doing only three. And so it would be the first three, um, weeks or Saturdays of May and she already has the schedule. So if we approve it, we would be able to, she would be able to set those up. And it's, so it's open to everybody. Yep.
Matt, were those dates? Oh, thank you. Were those dates already confirmed with Megan Maceau and Parks and Rec? So Megan has confirmed that the space is available on those dates? Okay.
Yes. My only question that I had that came up real quick was, um, concerning, um, insurance for the building for this particular grant. And so, but I think we as a council should decide if they go through it and we don't have any, um. Any staff who is available, that it should be part of this grant that we fund the insurance cost. That's my addition, Holly.
Matt, do you have any reason to believe that Holly doesn't carry her own insurance? She's a private business who leads these everywhere. So I would imagine that she carries her own insurance already.
You're probably right. I will make, um, I will make sure on that. To follow up with that. Thanks.
I wouldn't suspect there'd be any insurance issue.
Are we comfortable? Allowing for the insurance to be covered as part of our mini grant if she does not have insurance?
So it's, is it nine, is it at nine hundred right now? Three hundred for three sessions, nine hundred? And with the insurance, what, what did we figure out last time? It's.
I think it's highly unlikely that she doesn't have insurance, but in the event that she doesn't, she can partner with the Wilson Center and use our insurance for free.
Awesome.
Let's just do it that way.
Perfect.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. So since of the council that we are going to fund this grant, this mini grant, the main yoga, is that? We don't vote on these, but that's the sense of the council. So the direction to staff. Thank you. And, um, I would note that Ramadan begins at sundown today at six thirty six and we're at six thirty six. Is that correct?
I think it began yesterday.
I have it as in our committee meetings as sundown at six thirty six.
I think that's a. I think it's, yep, it began yesterday.
Okay.
Lori is nodding at me, right? Yeah, but every day. So yes, Ramadan, the break fast will be happening momentarily. Yep.
With that, um.
Was there another? Uh, was, was there only one of these requests? Or you said there was a new one, but I don't, I'm just looking at Holly's on this, on the, on the agenda.
There was one that we got from Pete.
I haven't, I have not had a chance to review the one that came in today.
So having not had a chance to review, perhaps we can talk about that one next time.
Good. How do we want to handle, we have an executive session, Sarah, to talk about questions.
Yep.
How do we want to handle that? Do we want to end the public meeting and move an executive session? Is that appropriate?
Yeah. Cornell provided me with a separate link so I can log back into executive session separately.
Okay. So we will, um, I'll, are there any public comments? Okay. So with that, we will, um, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one MRS. Subsection four oh five six A Personnel Issues, Discussion of Interview Questions for the Town Manager Search. Perfect.
Dan, can you? Can you repeat what was said? Because on the audio here, we can't hear it.
Sure. That was, uh, Mitch Stone, a member of the town staff who reminded us that we won't be making, not planning to make any public decisions coming out of the executive session. So the public meeting will end for those who are watching online. And we will not have any formal business at the end of the executive session, other than to end our, end the meeting. So with that, um, entertain a motion to move in the executive session pursuant to when MRSA four oh five six A Personnel Issues.
So moved.
Second.
All in, do you need a roll call for this one? We do, right? We'll entertain a roll call and the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Powers.
In favor.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
Counselor Baker.
In favor.
Counselor Laraway.
Favor.
Counselor Berthasell.
In favor.
Counselor Marks.
In favor.
And Counselor Demarek.
In favor.
And that is unanimous to enter executive session and the public meeting has ended.